The Cumberland School Committee on Thursday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven oh five P. M. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. For the record, I would just like to say that Mr. Collins, Ms. Smith, and Mrs. Vogel are not in attendance tonight. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. Motion by Mrs. Motion to approve by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report. Student Government Activities. Whoever's here from Student Government can come up. Or not. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Item one, Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting, ten twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. Item two, Approval of Minutes from the Executive Session, ten twelve, two thousand and twenty-three. The Executive Session, ten twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. The Enrollment Report, eleven-one, two thousand and twenty-three. The School Transportation Report, eleven-one, two thousand and twenty-three. School Bus Inspection Reports, eleven-one, two thousand and twenty-three. The Residency Tourance Report, eleven-one, two thousand and twenty-three. I need motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Drazek.
Good evening. Tonight we have two appointments, effective ten thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. We have Leah Bozodu, Special Education Teacher, in the Specialized Classroom at North Cumberland Middle School, and effective eleven-one, two thousand and twenty-three, Jennifer Decotis, an E.L.A. Essentials Teacher, one year only, at North Cumberland Middle School. We have one resignation, effective twelve-two, two thousand and twenty-three, Victoria Cleaves, Special Education Teacher, in the ICANN Classroom at Garvin. We have a Leave of Absence, effective eleven-twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, through the end of the school year, Giulia Alfano, the Special Education Coordinator. And we have one retirement, after thirty-seven years of service, a little one that touches us all, Cynthia Shabbett, the Confidential Assistant to the Superintendent and the School Committee, will be retiring on March fourth of two thousand and twenty-four, and we wish her well.
Well, we will definitely celebrate her before that day comes. Thank you, Mrs. Drazek. Next item on the agenda is the Report out of Executive Session Meeting on eleven-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, Report out of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes tonight. The next item is the Vote to Seal the Minutes of the Executive Session. Motion to seal by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
Madam Chair, good evening. First up, we have exciting news. We have two Feinstein Junior Scholar Golden Ticket Award winners. So first up, I call up Community Schools Principal, Ms. Vaughn is in the audience. And Ms. Vaughn is going to bring up our first winner, Millie Carpenter. Millie, stand right over here.
Congratulations, Millie. Millie is our Feinstein Junior Scholar Ticket winner. Millie has donated some funds to community school. We had a little conversation this morning about creating opportunities for the rest of our students, and Millie also has a check going to the Hotel for Homeless Dogs. Millie, yes, isn't that awesome? Millie. Mr. Feinstein has also sent some very special gifts for Millie. She has a prize bag to open a little bit later on. Congratulations, Millie. It's been so much for having you here. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Congratulations.
Good. Miss Vaughn, be quick.
Sure.
In our second Feinstein winner, North Cumberland Middle School, Ms. Conflin is here with Giuseppe Guerra.
So I am very excited to be up here tonight with a very special student. We were fortunate enough to be another Feinstein Golden Ticket winner, and we were one of the first rounds, and we were thrilled to have Giuseppe Guerra represent North Cumberland Middle School in that, in, in receiving the, the, the money from Feinstein Foundation. It's going to go to very good use. But then also, the student gets to choose a charity that they would like a five-hundred-dollar donation sent to, and it warms my heart that Giuseppe chose the Autism Project to receive the five-hundred-dollar charity donation as well. So thank you, Giuseppe. You make a great North Cumberland Middle School representative. Oh, and Giuseppe, you're getting a little bag too, of, of, you know, Mrs. Vaughn, she likes to, you know. But yours has not arrived yet. Okay, so she stood me up.
And next up, it's that time of year, we have the two thousand and twenty-three Support Education Professional of the Year. Before I read this year's winner, I wanted to let you know we had four other nominees. From BF, we had Cheryl Costa. From Community School, we had Christine Chowinski. From Cumberland Hill, we had Terry Simeo. In North Cumberland, we had Nicole Cook. But this year's winner comes from Garvin School. She's here with her principal, Ms. Carter. If they can come up, Joanne LaBosseineur. Stand right here while she talks about you. Stand right there.
So I am so excited to be here tonight. This is my, I feel like, third School Committee meeting in a row, but it's been some amazing things happening at Garvin, and this one was a long time coming. We brought our cheering section because we're not going to cry, we're going to celebrate. So I'm going to do my best not to get emotional, but Ms. Jo is magic. Everything she does, from the minute she walks in the door, improves the lives of all of our students, especially the kids in her classroom. She's one of our paraprofessionals in our ICANN program, and the care and attention that she puts into her work is phenomenal. Everyone who works with her knows that she can make things happen. Today is a perfect example of that. Mr. Moore and I were with a student for quite some time. That student did not want to leave a room. Ms. Jo walks in, holds out her hand, and says, "Let's go." And the student gets up and walks out the door, leaving Mr. Moore and I just kind of scratching our heads. But that is the power of Ms. Jo. She, she loves the kids in that room, and the kids feel it. So we are so lucky to have her at Garvin. We are so lucky that she is working in the ICANN program, and we are grateful that we finally get to share that with you, because she is amazing. So thank you.
And Ms. Friedman's here to present the plaque to our ICSI Support Person of the Year. Ms. Friedman.
Okay, so the Cumberland School Department, two thousand and twenty-three District Education Support Professional of the Year, presented to Ms. Jo, although it says Joanne LaBosseineur, in recognition of your inspirational actions and excellence in educational support. Congratulations.
Thank you.
One more thing, wait. Also, she goes on the Hall of Fame on the perpetual plaques. They'll be hung up in the office area, so.
So, this was a big surprise, and I couldn't have done it with all of my colleagues, Rachel, Erin, Carrie. It takes a village, for sure, and I've worked with the best of the best, and thank you so much.
If folks do want to exit, that's totally fine, but we're going to keep running our meeting, but we totally understand if you do have to go, but you're more than welcome to stay. All right. Next up, just a quick notice on parent-teacher conferences. You can see our dates here, December sixth for all the, the schools. Also, we have night meetings. Ashton, December thirteenth. December twelfth, at Community. December seventh, Garvin. December sixth, Cumberland Hill. The fourteenth, December BF, McCourt. You can see those dates, December sixth, December twelfth, January eighteen. And North Cumberland, December sixth, December fourteen, December nineteen. And then we have the high school, as you know, had their first date in September, and now we have December sixth for the high school. Mr. Chandler. Once again, one more time, Wednesday, the fifteenth of November, we have another clinic. So should folks want to get the flu shot and/or the vaccination for COVID, once again, that's being offered, so I encourage folks to sign up for that. Next up, we have been talking about this for a couple of meetings about, you know, as you know, next year, we're going to bring Community up here, and Community goes from a five-track school to a four-track school. And I think back before the pandemic, when the first bond passed, it was a more simplistic exercise in folks' minds, where maybe it was as simple as students go from Community to Ashton, and they fit, and it's all, it's done. But as enrollment keeps going up over the last couple of years, it just wasn't that simple. Right now, here's where we are. We're in our fourth iteration. We have a team, Mike Chandler, myself, Tracy Walton, and Lori Carr. We sit at the computer on our screen. We see where the students live in different streets, and we try to grab the right streets and write the right balance of first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, that kind of thing. So right now, we're looking to move ninety-five to a hundred students from Community to other schools for next year. And that would be, you know, that would start next year, then when Community's done, that would be the constant, a four-track school, a community. That's always been the plan, because as you recall, Community's getting four of those common areas. So by definition, once the first bond passed, Community was a four-track school. That's what happened back in like two thousand and eighteen or so. So we're looking at it right now. In our fourth model, we're getting very close. I think next meeting, we'll have the maps to you with the streets that would shift. Right now, in this fourth iteration, we're using all the spaces we have in the various schools. The schools that are involved right now in this are Community, obviously, shifting some kids. Then we have Ashton and Garvin taking on some students. That's the current equation. You think of a shift down Ashton, down to Garvin, that kind of thing. So the challenge here is, as enrollment goes up, it gets more and more complicated. So in today's equation, we start today at ten o'clock, we fit with some creativity. I would tell you, it's good that the bond passed, because with the new BF in the fall of twenty-seven, we have more flexibility to have space. We gained two hundred and fifty-five seats. Until that time, we have three more seasons to be creative, to fit our students. I'll talk more about that in a second. So for tonight, I can tell you, I believe we'll have the maps to you on the fourteenth of December, and the street lists of what we're proposing to you. We don't expect you to vote on it in December. We expect discussions, we expect questions. I would hope to get a few folks in the committee to join us and kind of look at it, critique, problem solve, that type of thing, and hopefully you could vote on some kind of map in the spring, with the route, these changes. So that's kind of where we are. Well, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the process.
So actually, that was one of my questions. Last time that we discussed this, we had a couple of School Committee members, I was on it, on the committee, along with Mr. Monica, and, and that was the proposed redistricting two years ago? Yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to combine words. So, you know, before we make any decisions, is that going to be something that we do as well? Because I've heard from parents already about this.
Our, our hope was, when we get our first draft, we bring you in, say, "Here's the first draft, have at it." And we start talking all winter about the first draft and what other options you have. There are always options. It's just a question of what you want to do, and we're trying to be really creative. I'll give you one example. We have a space in the third floor of this building, the trans, it's the old girls and boys locker rooms. They've been dormant for probably decades. We may be able to optimize those spaces to make classroom space and at a, at a low cost. So we're looking at that as an option to get creative. Until BF is built, if we keep gaining kids, we're going to have those kinds of enrollment crunches. Once again, it's a good problem to have, but we have to be creative in looking at the spaces. So when we're done the draft, we'll show you the draft, the homework, we'll show you the streets, we'll show you all the variables, we'll show you the class sizes by contractual cap, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. We'll also show you the available spaces in each building you can use, and then we'll see what you think about our, our plan.
One quick follow-up. Is this only elementary, or is this middle?
Elementary is our task right now. That's what we've been tasked with. And one last piece, I know last time we did this two years ago, we were able to grandfather people, if you were in fourth grade going to fifth grade. Right now, the current model, we cannot guarantee grandfathering right now, we're so full. Right now, that's where it is. Right now, in this current model, we have twenty-eight students that would be impacted going into fifth grade, but we certainly would like to grandfather if we can. Right now, I can't promise you that in November. So the map will come next meeting, no pressure, Mr. Chandler, the streets, and then we start the discussions of how you want to proceed.
Ms. Rogalski.
Talk to the chair.
We, no. Actually, we, according to Rhode Island general law, we cannot take questions. There's a, yeah.
I can talk to you, I can talk to you after.
But you can talk to him separately, yeah.
I will stay and talk to you.
Yeah.
In public comment.
And in public comment, you can make a comment, but we can't answer it. That's just, it's just the law. But you can talk to Dr. Thornton. Mrs. Rogalski.
Just, I'm wondering, in making these, you know, every year we have these out placements where we allow students to go, their home school is Community, but we allow them to go to Garvin. Are we looking at changing that and actually, you know, with being so crowded, are we looking at perhaps keeping kids where they were, like where they're districted to?
Every year in the model, you put the kids back in their home schools, you model it, and then if it helps your numbers, you would approve those next summer. We gather everyone's requests all year and date stamp them, and then in August, we try to approve what we can if it helps the numbers. Or if it's a wash, we do it. Last year, we approved a lot of, most, I think, last year. But it gets harder to approve those when you get tighter, but in some cases, it may help the numbers. I would tell you, right now, as you see our numbers, when you sit with us, you'll see, it's incredibly interesting just to, you know, how, how full we are getting, how quickly we're getting this fall. It's really unusual.
So for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year, Community School is coming here.
Yes.
The ninety-five to a hundred kids that you said would be redistricted out of Community, would they be coming here too, or they'll, they'll get redistricted?
No, they would go to a newly renovated Ashton and/or Garvin, in the current model.
Okay.
Or Ashton to Garvin. Picture like a, like a shift.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Rogalski.
So no more flexibility at Cumberland Hill to add any more there? Just, I'm just thinking geographically.
Cumberland Hill, we have, as, as you see our model, next month, if you're on our team, we have one room to give there. We have one with the called a Da Vinci Space, you know those rooms they have with the sink and the extra windows, that area? I can make that room an extra grade three, an extra grade four, whatever we need. We have one room there to, to use. Different buildings have different safety valves, but we're using a lot of the safety valves now. Quick example, last year, we had to add a fourth K at Garvin over the summer and a third K at Ashton. So K is really interesting. Right now, we, K, we're at three hundred and eighty-six kids. That's our high watermark for many, many years. So it's really, you know, interesting how, how it's climbing. Okay, thank you. Next up, we're part of Nezdeck. Last meeting, I think you saw Cropper do a projection. I am not going to have you hear a projection report, I'm going to give you the executive summary. But Nezdeck, we have a service, it's free, so I got another projection for free to kind of cross-reference that to Cropper and last year's Nezdeck. The long story short, this slide is the, the slide, we're going up fourteen more percent, fourteen percent in ten years. We're climbing. So right now, they're saying forty-seven thirty-four, that's K twelve, you can add in the pre-K, a hundred and twenty-seven more kids, so like forty-eight sixty right now. We'll climb to fifty-four ninety-three plus pre-K. So fourteen percent on the rise over the next fourteen years. I asked my folks today, so since October one, what's happened? Since the first of October, we've gotten twenty-four more kids. We have eleven, what's called in the portal online, and thirteen are being processed right now. I asked, where are they coming from? I get, I said, "Give me a five random sample, five kids." Five sample, Puerto Rico, Tampa, Maine, Boston, and Haiti. So that's, it's a sample of my twenty-four. I also asked, maybe some kids are leaving, still they're not all adding. How many are leaving us in elementary? I said, "Pull, pull the five elementaries, who's leaving?" I have one leaving Ashton since October one. BF has zero. Community has one leaving. Cumberland Hill, one, and Garvin, one. So four kids leaving, twenty coming in this month, basically. So that's what we're having. Like I said, it was good, it was, it was a free report, I took the advantage of it, and it kind of confirms we're going up. So questions on the enrollment? All right. And then on, this is a Tale of Contrast. My usual construction report, our two big contrasts here, we have Ashton and we have Garvin. First, we have Garvin. We have the new fence up, we have the new basketball court, we have the painted lines for four-square. Go ahead, Mike. We have the basketball court, we have the basketball net all up. Just, it's done. So that was exciting. We have grass in the backyard of Garvin. We have the fence, we finished. End of November, the trees come in from the town, all trees across this line are going in, all trees by the front. That's going to be dramatic, end of November. This is the new addition. It's open. We're looking to have a, hopefully, a ribbon cutting early December. Wait until then, because we think we're ready for good company by then, we'll have, clean everything up. Everything's done-done, right? So we want to wait till we're done-done. So we're thinking December four. This is taking a right turn, going into the new addition from the old part of the building. You walk down the hall, that's the first room you see. I'm sorry, this is the first room you see as you walk in the main entrance. That was the temporary cafeteria. That's now the open common area with the furniture that was planned for that space. Pretty neat. These are also pretty cool, too. These tables that are kind of like clouds can be written on as well, there's kind of a, you know, multi-use function there. That's the common area. That is the hallway in the new addition with the rooms on the right, next one. That's the library, or the modern twenty-first century learning, learning space, so very exciting. That's the cafeteria. If you think of the old Garvin caf and what it was, and the new caf, it's a dramatic change. So very exciting to see the, the new cafeteria. Once again, the caf, just the kitchen area. And this is the other classroom space in the new addition, once again, the kitchen. And that's just leaving the new addition. And the flagpole is new. We had to do that, the old flagpole was rusted and just not in good shape, so we finally got that up. That was exciting. The sign's still coming, the Garvin sign, we're waiting on that. And now we go to Ashton, Tale of Two, you know, schools. This is in demo mode, so it's kind of like Groundhog Day. Here we go again, we're demoing. Ashton's office, that's the front door, walk in and that's what you see. That's a bathroom, there's some new copper in there, that's all we've done so far. That's the library at Ashton, what it was. That's a bathroom. We have to demo and jackhammer and put all the plumbing on this wall, on the other wall. So that's why they have the jackhammer of that space. That's one of the open classroom concepts you saw just a minute ago at Garvin, that's going to happen in Ashton, there'll be two of those. That's a classroom, what it looks like after you demo. That is the new addition, they're putting down the floor in the new addition, just going in. And once again, that's another open classroom concept, a wall being demoed. That's the backyard. I show you that because the roof is done. The roof had a, had eleven active leaks in it, it's now a brand-new roof. So it's done, no leaks at Ashton. Very exciting. And once again, happy to answer any questions on construction, but December four would be our next kind of event, to have you come see Garvin.
Awesome. All right, thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you.
And next up on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees. The first one is the Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins, well, actually, nobody from the Fiscal Subcommittee could be here tonight, so Mr. Collins told me what to say. So the Fiscal Subcommittee met last night due to scheduling conflicts, which is why they're not all here tonight. We have twelve resolutions for our consideration tonight and payment of bills. A couple of highlights from the meeting, what Dr. Thornton just said, that Garvin's in the final phase of completion, we're looking to have our ribbon cutting ceremony the first week of December, and McCourt has received a grant from W.B. Mason, and they're doing a soft renovation of the library, which will include new furniture, courtesy of W.B. Mason, and new carpeting. So that is the Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Next is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
We have not met. However, there's plenty of policy work going on, and I expect December to be a very busy policy month.
Excellent. I can't wait. The next item is Achievement and Communication Subcommittee Update. We did not make this week either, but we are working on scheduling our next meeting in the next couple of weeks. And then the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update, Mrs. Rogalski?
We did not yet meet this month.
It feels like we just had a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why. All right, next item is Comments from the Public. If anyone from the public would like to make any comments, you can come up to the microphone. All right, next item on the agenda is New Business. Item one, Vote on Teacher-Aid Disciplinary Matter. We discussed this in Exec tonight, so the pleasure of the committee.
I'd like to make a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and Revote to Approve Homeschool Instruction Requests for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Motion to approve by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda, Discussion and Revote to Approve Resolutions. So, Mr. Collins says.
Yes, in his voice.
In the voice of Mr. Collins. No. We, we have twelve resolutions for the committee's consideration tonight, SCPR eleven dash twenty-two three, one sixty-nine through one eighty. But before we begin, I want to point out that Resolutions one seventy-seven, one seventy-eight, and one seventy-nine were tabled in Subcommittee because they did not receive invoices from the project manager before the meeting. So we need to table those three resolutions. So I would ask for a motion to table Resolutions SCPR eleven twenty-two three, one seventy-seven, one seventy-eight, and one seventy-nine. A motion by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. So now, we have nine resolutions remaining, SCPR eleven twenty-two three dash one seventy-nine through one seventy-six, plus one eighty. So the nine resolutions passed Fiscal Subcommittee, two to zero, and I am not, I can't make that. So, so Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is Discussion and Revote to Approve Payment of Bills. So we have payment of bills in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Payment of bills passed in Fiscal Subcommittee, two to zero. So I need a, a motion to approve, to approve payment of bills by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Mrs. Rogalski.
We talked last week about some academic accomplishments, and I just wanted to make sure that people also know the, some incredible sports accomplishments of the district this past week. McCourt Middle School went to the state finals, and fortunately for soccer, they didn't win, but still to get to the state championship game is fantastic, so huge congratulations to them. The girls' varsity cross-country team won the state championship for the first time The girls' varsity cross-country team won the state championship for the first time in forty-one years, so they are state champions. Sam Henderson, who is a junior at the school, won the boys' varsity state title with a time of fifteen thirty-three. If you don't know how fast that is to run a five K, that is very fast. The boys team unfortunately came in one point short to Bishop Hendrickson, but it's the lowest score they've had in many years. And good luck to the football team as they play in state champions, not championship, semifinals, I believe, tomorrow. Oh, and the, oh, the JV volleyball team were state champions, girls, and the varsity plays for state championship on Saturday.
And what about the girls' soccer team? Aren't they?
Yes, they are in the.
They're in the state champion this weekend, so. Lots of things. Lot of, like, we're becoming a little powerhouse over here, academically and athletically. Other comments from the school committee?
I would just like to thank the voters of Cumberland.
Yes.
For coming out to vote and for passing the school bond so that we can build a new BF Norton and we can make sure that we are prepared for the future of the students in Cumberland. So thank you to everyone who made it out to vote and voted in favor of that.
Oh, Mrs. Rogalski?
One more thing, good luck to the boys and girls' cross-country teams tomorrow and Saturday in Belfast, Maine for New England championships. Maybe they can be the best in New England, too.
Uh, Mrs. Feather?
And just to add on to what you were saying, as a thank you to the voters as well, the, not only for the new BF Norton, but for also being able to fix this roof and being able to have, you know, not a, not basically a pulley for an elevator at NCMS, so we really appreciate that. And playgrounds, playgrounds, ADI accessible. So thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is vote to go into executive session. I don't believe we have that tonight. No executive session, so the next item on the agenda is adjournment, a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes four to zero. We're adjourned at seven thirty-seven PM. Thank you, everyone.